This conference will now be recorded.
With that in mind, we're going to start with some questions and I'm going to ask Mr. Rosario to address a couple of the big ones because there have been dominating questions we've received have been the ones about why are we going hybrid, why not all in, for example, and why the ABA B, the rotation that has students in on a Monday and a Thursday or a Tuesday and a Friday. So, Mr. Jerry, if you could just run through that before we get to more detailed questions, please.
Sure, thanks Jim. So yeah, as far as the question regarding why the hybrid plan and rather than all day every day, as Superintendent Matt Gary has shared with us, we're starting the school year with offering the hybrid plan rather than that in school every day because the hybrid plan actually is going to allow us to follow the Center for Disease Control, the CDC guidelines regarding social distancing. You know, we're able to keep the cohorts of students smaller. Like you, we very, very much want to have all of our students back in our schools as soon as possible, but we want this to be safe. So as soon as possible, as safely as possible. And we also want to avoid a spike that would force us to return to remote learning for everyone. So because of that, we truly believe that the hybrid plan is the most prudent approach at this time. And thank you for your cooperation with that. And as far as the decision, you know, many parents have been asking, you know, why not have my child come to school two days in a row, consecutive days, rather than Monday, Thursday, and Tuesday, Friday. And we actually considered as a district a variety of models. But in the end, we concluded that it would be best for our students to receive in-person instruction at both the beginning of the week and at the end of the week because we truly believe that this would help with engagement in the learning process. So your child will be here Monday, Thursday, Monday in the beginning, Thursday at the end, or Tuesday, Friday. So hopefully that'll answer those questions about why. I'll turn it back to you, Jim.
Thank you. So we're gonna, we've received hundreds of questions and we've grouped them. We're going to talk about, for starters, some of the basics logistics. We'll get into the remote experience, the hybrid experience. We'll talk some about safety. I have a slide we'll share about what's going to happen for the MELC contribution to the operation here. So with no further ado, I'm going to ask Mr. Robinson, if you could talk a little bit about when can parents expect to find out their children's schedule and what and when will they be receiving as far as documents on how to learn from home or prepare for the first day of school, Mr. Robinson?
Thanks Jim. Right now, within the next couple of days, you should be receiving a letter from your school. And in that letter, it will state your students' hybrid days, whether they are Monday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Friday, but also state their teacher and the designated school times.
And what about, what, whether, will people be getting any kind of documents to then look for those, Mr. Robinson?
No, there won't be any other documents, especially the remote learners. There won't be any hard copies sent home to remote learners. You will receive information from your teacher the first day of school and any other of those type of questions about documents should come from your homeschool.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, could you talk a little bit about the curriculum and overall learning plans? Will they be different this year? Mr. Jones, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
Just barely. Try again.
All right, how about this?
Yup.
All right. So the learning priorities have been identified, reach grade level, taking into account lost instructional time from last year, also as the potential need to move into full remote learning in the event of increased COVID-19 cases. So we expect far less in-person student collaboration due to social distancing needs. Students will be provided with individual learning materials to limit sharing.
Thank you. Next, we'll talk a little bit about special education students and other students with additional needs. Ms. Flores, can you talk about how those, how we're going to handle those situations this year?
Yeah, so first and foremost, all students who, special education students, EL students, and any student who receives additional services will get the differentiated tiered one support in their classroom with their cohort of students. But there may also be some times based upon individual students' needs, individual student needs, where they may come into the building, scheduled to come into the building more frequently to get the individualized services that, and the support that they need. There's some opportunities may also be available remotely for students who have additional needs.
Thank you. I'm going to ask again if Ms. Johnston was able to join us? Not hearing from Ann. I'm going to just fill in. We were, my question for her was about whether, if you had a child who's started out learning remotely, could they switch in and join the hybrid group, you know, if they weren't happy? And the answer to that is we would certainly try to accommodate a student in a rare emergency situation, but in general, we're not going to be bringing remote students into the building before January. Again, we're going to work with parents and families as best we can, let your administrators know, but only in sort of, sort of unusual circumstance would we be able to go in because of the complexities with scheduling and so forth. Back to, we're going to go, actually, I'm sorry, to Ms. Barnes now. Ms. Barnes, can you talk about standardized testing? How will that be done? How's that going to fit into this year's education?
Of course. So district benchmarks and assessments will be facilitated as appropriate for both in-person and for students who are learning remotely. So that will remain the same.
Thank you. A question about when, when, whether teachers were absent, when, when they're absent, what's going to happen in that scenario? Ms. Flores, can you explain?
Yes, of course. So we plan on having these modules available for teachers who are absent in person, as well as teachers who are absent remotely. So those, the substitutes will be covering classes.
Okay. Again, we have sort of a script and I have a question for Ms. Johnston. I'll ask one more time. I hope she was able to connect with us. Ms. Johnston, have you been able to join us? Well, then I'm going to, I'm going to just share this information that, that we were asked in, one person sent in the question saying, how long will hybrid learning be in place? They wrote, I'm only asking because it would be great to be organized and ready for when everyone can go back. And our answer is, we plan for the hybrid to be in place till at least October 16th, barring any developments that would lead to going to a full remote situation before that. If you read the paper, you saw Danbury had a spike and they're going all remote. So we're watching health data every single day, but if things stay as they are or don't get any worse, then our plan would be to go hybrid until at least October 16. And well before that, we would have contingency plans for that point. Mr. Jones, students in elementary school were not graded for the last three months of school, and they did get a few sentences written on the report card, but how will kids be graded for the upcoming school year, starting from the beginning of school, next, in two weeks?
Yeah. So, thanks Jim. The, the report cards will be issued using standards-based grading.
Thank you. We're going to talk about Wednesdays a little bit later in the, with the options parents have for, for Wednesdays, a little later in the presentation here. But I can tell you that Wednesdays will be a learning day for students. Teachers will be engaged in conferencing and giving feedback to students and providing opportunities for learning and, and new learning and reviewing and so forth. So while Wednesdays will be a day that everybody's home, with the exception of students who are in our buildings because of childcare kind of situations, it will be a learning day. So we're going to shift now to health and safety. And before we get into these questions, I want to just share that we're going to have a special town meeting a week from tonight, actually, exactly, at seven o'clock, Tuesday, September 1st. Mr. Geary will be at that. Mr. Daly, the former Buckley principal, who's our COVID compliance director, our health folks, they'll be there to talk about these very specific situations. We know that in the event of a community uptick or individual cases, we have procedures for cohorting and contact tracing and so forth. So we have some general information we'll share tonight, starting with Mr. Robinson, who's going to talk about the question about face shields instead of face masks. Some parents are asking, could a kid wear a shield that might be less uncomfortable? Mr. Robinson, what do you have for us?
Yes. So students are required to wear a mask. Unfortunately, we will not be providing face shields for students. And, but students could wear one in addition if they brought one from home.
And Mr. Jones, talk about the availability of masks, if you could.
All right, sure. So every student will get two washable cloth masks imprinted with the MPS logo. In addition, we'll have disposable masks at schools for those who may have forgotten them. Also, students are welcome to use their own mask.
Now, I mentioned, we're not going to get into too many specifics about health and safety, but one general question that's been asked is, will we be taking the temperature of kids or teachers each day? Ms. Barnes?
That's a great question, Jim. I know that's been on all of our minds. So no, we won't be taking the temperatures. We're asking parents to, this is where you can play a part. So you need to look at your students and, and assess for if it's appropriate for them to come to school. So looking at if they have a temperature of 100 degrees or higher, looking to see if they have COVID-like symptoms. And we're going to follow all public health and safety guidelines. So students must stay home if they're sick. And if you have any symptoms that are consistent with COVID-19, we're asking both staff and students that they should make sure that they contact a service provider and get diagnosed with, and see if they have COVID.
Thank you. I mentioned at the top that we have these tri-fold shields around the student desk. There'll be sanitizers at entrance and throughout buildings and so forth. So we have the tools there, but we also know we have youngsters who need some direction and so forth. So Ms. Krish, my question for you is, what will schools be doing about teaching and reinforcing the safety rules that'll be in place?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, we've met a number of kindergartners who've come to Martin School to tour the building and see their classroom. And it's been amazing to see how comfortable they already are with wearing masks. And that's really a testament to our families doing a great job, like having them practice wearing a mask now. And so when we go back to school and we're learning these new safety rules, as schools will be teaching and reteaching those rules and really taking the time to make sure students understand the rules, and we'll be relying on families too to reinforce that at home.
Thank you. As I mentioned, we'll have medical people and so forth at the meeting next week to talk about the protocols, should there be a case, but we want to do everything we can to prevent those. So one of the steps we've taken is mask breaks. Ms. Krish, I'll stay with you. Can you tell us a little bit about how those are going to work?
Yeah, sure. So those will take place outdoors for an extended period of time, 15 minutes or so. And that will happen frequently. Teachers will be having those mask breaks scheduled into their schedule, and they also can find opportunities to take their classes outside for learning times as well, to take off their masks. And in addition to that, there will be shorter, briefer mask breaks that will take place in the classroom. And those will take place behind those transparent barriers like the one that Mr. Farrell showed at the beginning of his presentation.
I got a text message from Ms. Johnston, and she is having technical difficulties, as they say. So we're going to stay with you for a second. I'm sorry, actually, we'll go to Ms. Barnes now. And I want to ask you, Ms. Barnes, flu season's coming up, and I just, I wonder, I think a lot of people are questioning, you know, how are we going to tell the difference? What's the plan? Have you, do we have, you have some thoughts on the difference between sniffles that might be the flu versus sniffles that might be COVID? What's the advice you have for people?
So we do. We're following a specific protocol for COVID-like symptoms. And yes, some of the COVID symptoms, symptoms do mirror flu symptoms. And so in those instances, we would call parents and ask them to pick up their child because the only way to tell the difference is to have a COVID-19 task.
Thank you. Now, we're going to switch gears, talk about remote learning. Mr. Wolf, as I mentioned, is the remote learning coordinator, so he'll handle some, I don't think all of this though, but starting with that sort of basic tech question, Mr. Wolf, what about computers? We remember the lines that's outside of the schools last spring when everyone was getting ready in mid-March. What's the plan on computers? What if you have a problem with the internet, so forth? A little bit of that hardware information, what can you share, Mr. Wolf?
Sure. Thank you, Jim. So we will definitely be distributing computers again this year. The good news is, because of last spring, having everybody out of school, most of our returning students have the hardware they need, as well as the internet connectivity. So we expect that mainly our incoming kindergartners and perhaps some students new to the district would be those who are in need of the computers. But anybody who is a student in the Manchester Public Schools and is in need, in need of a computer, will be able to receive one, as well as a hotspot if they need that connection to the internet. And so Carrie Kearney, who is the district's director of technology, has ordered the computers and the hotspots, and she will be setting up a schedule for distribution of both of those. And that will be something that will be sent out via email. You will know about it. I'm sure the superintendent will put it in one of his emails, as well as building administrators. So, you know, we're going to make sure that everybody who requires a computer and a hotspot will have it as soon as possible, as close to the beginning of school as possible.
Thank you. I will remind you again, we have a chat. You can add questions as the night unfolds. We may not be able to get to them, but we will save them and address them later in some fashion. So please do that. Mr. Wolf, you talked about the computers. Let's talk about the learning. Will distance learning be, you know, essentially synced in sync with the in-person learning? Will the same teacher teach both in-person and online classes? How's that going to work?
So if you don't mind, I'll take the second part of that one first. So in both the hybrid model and the remote learning model, students will have the same teacher for live teaching and online instruction. So it's really no different than if the COVID virus miraculously just disappeared and we were back to normal, and your child would come to school and they would have the same teacher teaching them throughout the day. And this would be the same thing, regardless of whether it's in-person learning, because we know that students doing in-person, doing the hybrid model, they're in-person two days a week, but they're also receiving instruction online. And so that would be the same teacher. And for those students who are doing the remote learning, they'll have the same teacher throughout the morning and actually into the afternoon for the live teaching. And then when assignments are given, that will be done by that same teacher. As far as remote learning and in-person learning being in sync with each other instructionally, you know, if you were to look at two different classes, whether they're both hybrid or both remote or one of each, they may not be on the exact same lesson every day, but they're certainly going to be darn close because all teachers, both in the hybrid model and the remote model, are going to be working from the same learning plans that are developed here in Manchester by a group of teachers and coaches and our directors of teaching and learning.
And talk a little bit about the, the pacing, for example. Will the teaching be, assignments be given on a weekly basis, be class by class, day by day? How's that going to work?
Well, the first thing we have to remember is that most of the day will be live instruction. Even though it's, it's, you know, remote learning, the teacher will be instructing in-person for five hours out of the day. And then another hour and a half of the day will be spent with independent work or small group with the teacher. And so assignments will be given on a day-to-day basis for the most part, because it's going to be reflective of what took place during the day.
Now, will there be an opportunity for remote students to meet their teachers face-to-face initially to make that first connection, Mr. Wolf?
Ideally, that would be wonderful, but let's all remember that many of the teachers who are teaching remote, chose to teach remotely, chose to do so because of health-related concerns for themselves or loved ones that live with them and that they care for. Therefore, it just would not be possible for them to come into school to meet with students and parents face-to-face.
Thank you. Mr. Rosario, some remote learning questions for you. What about, we, I think we hinted at this earlier, a supply list for the virtual learners. Talk about, if you could, the teachers. I think, again, we, someone mentioned there, they are our teachers from MPS. And are there workbooks available for students who maybe would prefer something like that instead of just the, the screen in front of them?
Yeah, sure. So first off, I want to say that, that yes, even though for those of our learners who will be learning fully remotely, I want you all to know that whether you're a Bowers Bulldog, a Waddell Eagle, a Buckley Bobcat, a Martin Mustang, you will still be one of, you know, you will still be in your, in your school enrollment. In other words, we have been, right now, this week, sorting supplies for all of our learners, whether they were remote or hybrid. So each of our learners, including those remote, we will have, they'll be getting supplies. The district has ordered a common set of individual student supplies for each child in kindergarten to fourth grade. And similar to the way we had curbside pickup with picking up other materials over the summer, you'll be, there'll be a schedule and you'll be getting an email from either the superintendent or your principals about when to come to pick up your supplies, which will most likely be at your homeschool. And that would be not only the individual school supplies, but also Envision workbooks. We knew, we know from the spring that, that families really wanted to have that workbook, the actual math workbook in front of them to continue to work with their children at home. So that, so each child in the elementary schools will be getting a workbook, a math workbook from Envisions. And students who are learning remotely, again, would be able to pick theirs up when they come to pick up the individual school supplies. And like Mr. Farrell said, as far as your teachers, while you, your child is still, well, Mr. Wolf will be coordinating the remote learning and your children are still, in fact, you know, enrolled as learners within our system in your home elementary school. The teachers in the remote school may not, may not come from your particular elementary school. They will be, they could be teachers from throughout the school district.
I have one more question about remote learning, and it will ask Ms. Barnes to tackle this one. How much attention would a parent be expected to or need to give a kindergarten-age student while online with the teacher?
So you have to understand that you, as parents, are your teacher, your child's expert. So you know your child. So you will have to sit with your child, depending on what their, their attention span is. So for many kindergartners, 10 to 15 minutes to sit and do work is a good amount of time. So when you receive the learning information, you should look at it in chunks. Look at the, the tasks that they have to do and think about the timeframe that your child can sit and do that task, and then provide breaks for them, just as we would do in school.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. We'll talk now a little bit about the hybrid learning experience. And Mr. Robinson, my question for you is, can you describe what the first day of school will be like? What will happen? How do the children know where to go? Things like that.
Sure. So I'm sure everyone's getting a little bit anxious and ready to, to go to school the first day of school. And what that's going to look like is that when you get to your school, the students will be directed by staff and greeted by staff in front of the building, on which way to enter the building. There will be signage also that shows you where to go, because we're trying to be very careful on where you enter the building. And as they enter the building, they will have the opportunity to receive a grab-and-go breakfast, which they will bring to their classroom. During the first day, they also will go over and review new building expectations and procedures with their classroom teacher. They will also be introduced and follow a full academic day schedule. So it will definitely be a day where they will go over all of the expectations and what they need to know about how this new normal is going to be for, for school.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I'm feeling nostalgic just thinking about first days of school and how this is going to be very different. And as I feel nostalgic, I'm back in that feeling like a kid again. So my next question turns to lunch. So why don't you tell us how lunch will work in school? What's it, is it prepackaged? Do kids get to choose what they're going to eat? What can you share about the lunch experience this year?
Well, I know the biggest thing is, you know, when kids get to school, they always expect, have that expectation of being in the cafeteria, which we will not be using this year. Lunch will be prepared, delivered, and served to all students within their classrooms by the kitchen staff. And they will also get assistance by noon aids that will also be in attendance in the classroom helping, helping out. Students will be able to preorder hot or cold lunch. I know that they'll have several options when they get to their classroom to choose whether they want hot lunch and cold lunch. This year, I believe, it's just going to be a bagel plate when they, so they'll have an opportunity to do that during the morning. Students also have a choice of bringing their own lunch. One thing that we are being very cautious with now because of, because of allergies is that we are not having students bring in any type of nuts this year to the classroom.
Thank you. Now, we talked about the remote learning. The hybrid students obviously have some remote learning they'll be doing as well. Ms. Flores, do students in the hybrid plan have to bring their Chromebooks to and from school each day? Is it possible to have one to keep at school, another to keep at home? Would that be something that kids could do?
Yeah. So the expectation is for students to bring their Chromebooks to school anytime they are reporting in person. You know, at this time, unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to provide a computer for school and a computer for them, for students to keep at home. We will need them to bring their computers into school.
And if you would, now that we talked about the computers, when and, when will they be using them? How does the distance learning portion work with hybrid? Is it the same teacher? We went over this a little bit with the remote, but talk about the hybrid remote learning experience.
Yes, similar to, to what Mr. Wolf kind of explained. Your teacher is, your, your classroom teacher is the teacher that you would see in person. She would, on your days that you are remote, your teacher would assign you some independent work that you would work on throughout the day. At the end of the day, around 2:30, you would log on with your classroom teacher and work with them till 3:40 remotely. That gives the student an opportunity to always have that interaction with their teacher, whether it's in-person or it's remote.
Mr. Jones, as we continue to try to paint a picture of what it's going to be like, can you tell us how many students will be in each class? Will the kids have their own desks or these shared desks? And, and how many teachers and other students would us, would the child typically interact with each day?
Yeah, of course. So in each classroom, there will be no more than 10 students in each cohort, the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday cohort. Students will have their own desk, and approximately four adults will be interacting with each scholar during the day.
Now, Ms. Barnes, what about, well, that, it sounds like the students won't travel much, perhaps bathroom breaks or trips to the water fountain. Can you talk about how the, what transitions that we can expect the kids to have, if any?
You're correct, Jim. So our students will, for the most part, remain in their classrooms, with the exception of going outside for those mask breaks and for recess. And we will have our Manchester Public School staff coming in to do gym, to do music, to do art. So we want to reduce the spread, and that's the best way to keep our cohorts together.
And Ms. Krish, what measures are being taken to keep the classroom clean on a daily basis?
Yeah, and I actually see a question in the chat about that, about how we're keeping our classrooms.
about how we're keeping our classrooms clean in between cohorts. And that's part of why we have this change to the schedule, why we have children leaving each day at 2:10, because it gives our custodians plenty of time to follow the CDC guidelines on how to clean the rooms. And in particular, paying special attention to those high-touch areas like doorknobs, light switches, touchscreens, computer screens, tables, really making sure everything is thoroughly cleaned and sanitized each day in between cohorts.
Thank you for that. I'm glad you checked the chat because I've not really been able to as I move from screen to screen here. And Mr. Fairbanks, if you're back, if you could get the slide back so that people can see that. Are you there, Mr. Fairbanks? And if you go to the next page, please. Okay, as I run over, I go over a little bit of this MELC information. Presenters, if you want to go into the chat, I'm going to ask you for farewell words, but you can grab some last questions as we go one more time around in a minute. But MELC will have before and after-school programming on, we'll start with the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, the school days. They'll be available from 7:00 AM until the start of school, which I don't have in front of me, 9:00 AM-ish. And then from the end of the day, which is, and again, I apologize because it's on another screen somewhere, in the 4 o'clock hour till 6:00. So from 7:00 AM until school begins and then school ends till 6:00. There's a fee for this. It's open for the students who are in the buildings on those days. And there's, as I say, that's just, that's not the Wednesdays, though. But on Wednesdays, MELC and MPS are cosponsoring a free full-day program, which runs from 8:00 to 4:30 at these three locations. You see them on the screen, Bennett for Bennett students, Buckley for Buckley-Bowers, Highland and Martin students, and Waddell for Keene, Verplank, and Waddell students. And enrollment for that closes on Thursday, the 3rd of September. The MELC website has lots more information about that. On next slide, if you could, Mr. Fairbanks.
Mr. Farrell, one of the, one of the chat questions does deal with MELC. Did you want me to take that?
Well, what we're going to do, I, I'm going to ask each of you to have, you can sort of take questions. This is going to be freelancing. We'll see how this goes. But we'll start with you, Ms. Rosario. Final words, including any of the chat questions that you might want to grab as you, as we wrap things up.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I was thinking, as you were talking about MELC, one of the questions in the chat room is if our child is attending MELC on the two days they are not in school, will, will there be instruction of any kind? Will teachers or aides be helping students with their work? So first of all, the MELC, as Mr. Farrell explains, is before and after-school. And then on Wednesdays, they'll be working with the Board of Ed. But during the school day, the, the school hours, I should say, 9:10 to 2:10 on the days that your child is not in their in-person classroom. So they're coming on the off days. There will definitely be a plan. Right now, we're in the middle, and we're calling that our extended hybrid. And we're developing a plan, which will have the students doing a combination of physical activity, camp-like crafts and games, and supported independent reading and schoolwork. So yes, there will be, where many of us are going to have our power educators that work with our students. They will be, in fact, working with the children that come for the extended hybrid on the days that they aren't in-person school. And I would just like to close by saying, you know, as, as a, as a group, we're really excited. The elementary principals have been working really, for the whole summer, quite honestly, in preparing. We want a very safe opening for your children. And, and, and we look forward to, you know, if you have any other further questions, don't hesitate to contact your individual school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosario. Ms. Krish, last words.
Sure. So I noticed that there were a lot of questions or requests to see those plastic dividers again. Could we just go back to that first slide? So parents have the opportunity to see them again? And, you know, some of the questions you might have asked might get answered at the health meeting, the town hall meeting that's being held on September 1st. So just sit tight if you haven't gotten that question answered. And also, please feel free to reach out to your individual elementary principal if one of your questions wasn't answered. I know we're all in the buildings and very eager to answer your questions if you have one and it wasn't answered tonight. Thank you.
My understanding, by the way, as we stand that slide, is you see that there's, it's visible from the front. I'm told that on the, the pieces that are flanking it on the left and right are, are solid. You know, this is just a very light material. But Mr. Daley, as I mentioned, who's the COVID compliance person, shared that with me when he sent me the slide earlier today. So next, a few words, if you would, from Ms. Barnes.
Thank you, Jim. So there's a question that I'd like to address. The question speaks to how will social distancing be, and other, and other requirements around COVID, excuse me, be handled for young students, for kindergartners in particular? And the question speaks more to, you know, making sure we don't embarrass students when students want to go hug each other. So I was drawn to that question because during my tours today, what I did with kindergartners was I said to them, you know, I'm going to give you an air hug. And so if I hug myself and you hug yourself also, then we are hugging. We really just have to think differently about how we connect with each other. It doesn't mean that we don't connect anymore. This is just a new way to connect. So I think if we have those positive outlooks and show kids positive new ways to connect, there's no embarrassment about it. We have to make this our new norm. And I look forward to meeting the rest of my parents. And if you have further questions, please call Keene School.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, Jim, so there was, there's a question about the size of the classrooms right now. And right now, we're looking at six to 10 students per class based on the size of the classrooms, which are fairly small. So I think that students will definitely benefit from the smaller class sizes. And I know, you know, based on whatever school that you're in and how big the classrooms are, I know that there'll be a lot more of an intimate setting with students being in the smaller classroom and getting that intense instruction that they needed to, to catch up to where they left off from last year and also make some further gains. So right now, the classrooms are looking at from six to 10 students.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Jones, any parting words?
Yeah. One, thank you, everyone, for attending this virtual town hall. My colleagues have stated before me, any other questions, you know, feel free to give us a call out of your respective schools. But there is a question, I know, about iPads and K-1. So it is true, kindergarten in first grade will receive iPads. As you know, they will go home with that particular scholar and then brought back to the school as well. Also, there have been a number of pieces by IT to make sure it is secure so that our scholars aren't going on sites that should not be, they should not be on site. So I, again, I just want to thank everyone for coming out. Again, any additional questions, give us a call, send us an email. But we really look forward to seeing your scholars on the 8th or the respective times that they come in. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Flores?
Yeah, so again, I want to thank you guys for all logging on and taking the time to come out. I know these are really, this, this time causes a lot of anxiety in parents. I'm a parent of myself, myself, and trying to just figure out what we're doing for our kids is a hard decision for us. I do want to let everyone know, rest assured, we are really working hard to ensure students are safe. We've had kids, a few kindergartners come in for tours and they are all excited and kids adjust so well. I would say they adjust better than adults. There is a question that I know was addressed, but I think it's really important to address around remote learning being taught the same way it was during the interim learning experience back in March? Or will it be live teaching? I think it's a really exciting time that during the remote experience, your child will have the opportunity to have live teaching with their teacher. I think it just creates a classroom-like environment. But also on top of that, we recognize that parents' schedules are all different. And those remote learning opportunities, the live ones, will have to have a recorded session for parents if they need to play back in order to support their child while they're at home, learning remotely. So I thank you guys for coming. I can't wait to see kids who are coming in and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. And I want to, on behalf of Mrs. Johnson, send her best. She was not able to join us. She's equally excited and, you know, she's in a new building and will be in touch with the Buckley parent community regularly. You see the final slide. I want to remind you again that next Tuesday night at 7:00, we'll have a special MPS Health and Safety Virtual Town Hall. You'll get another email, I'm sure, from Mr. Geary or myself with the login information. And we'll invite people to share questions, as we've done tonight. We, I have my email address on the screen. You're more than welcome to send anything to me or directly to the schools. We've, we've worked hard. We know that there's a lot of questions. We're very, very excited and committed to making your children have the best possible educational experience while they're staying safe. So again, on behalf of everybody, thank you very much. And two weeks from today, we will begin what should be a very, very exciting school year. Thank you and good night.
Jim, I'm sorry. This is Jennifer Reddottromley. I'm a supervisor in People's Services and I saw that. That's, that's okay. There is a myriad of questions about special education and I just want to rest assured and, and just know, parents, our teachers are returning. And when they return, if your child receives Special Education Services, case managers will be reaching out to parents and talking about each individual plan. So just know, more information is coming to you. I know there were about four questions. And they will be reaching out to you, starting on Thursday, Friday, maybe into Monday. And more information's going to be coming from our department. Sorry about the last minute there, Jim.
That's okay. Well, before we sign off, I think we're losing some people. Are there any other staff that have any things that we might have missed?
Well, Jim, I'd like to add my closing comments since you-
Oh, I'm sorry, Stu. Oh, I apologize. I went through my seven elementary schools and I skipped over our remote learning coordinator. Go ahead, Stu.
Well, so first of all, I want to add my thanks to my colleagues, thanking all the families for logging on tonight and for sending in questions tonight, as well as sending them in before this evening. One thing that I think is really amazing is that what we are about to embark on is the result of literally months and months of planning. This has taken place since before we got out of school in June. And I think it's going to work. I think it's going to work well. I think we can not duplicate what takes place in in-person learning when everybody is there five days a week. But we're going to work hard to meet our children's needs, their learning needs, as well as their social and emotional needs. And I think people will be pleased with what takes place. Now, will there be some glitches here and there? I could almost guarantee it. I'd like to think I'm wrong, but there are a lot of moving parts here. And in the end, I think it will be worth it. And we will really be doing our kids a service as well as our families.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. And I think on that note, we're going to call it a night. Again, thanks, everybody, for taking part. Stay in touch and look for more emails and more information. Good night.